Right.
Now, Mary got an email this today. And I sent her the language to send back to the person.
Interesting.
But it was Janet again.
It was email to her, the way they used to. She gave it to me and I said, no, we're not accepting them. And then I sent her the language to send back to them.
I couldn't figure out how to hang on.
Oh, it's the snacks for the coffee.
Yes. Thank goodness Brian. Oh, I love their, um, I love their shirts.
Unless I look at it. They say that kind of cookies. And I'm friends with them. And, um, yeah. It's like, oh, you know, it's like they're really very, um, decides how you have to do it. And if they don't think it looks right, it's, it really gets pitched away. It's like, yes, you're kind of like, oh, you know.
Hi Jim.
Hey, how are you? We put the thorn between roses.
Well, hey stranger, how are you?
How many did we have in our left class? We're right at twelve.
Um, it's kind of a bit bad. So, you know, I've been having a lot of these. It's okay, there's, there's a lot of people there. I'm trying not to get involved in a kind of weird conversation. You know, I'm just trying to find some of these. So, so, this, this, this is kind of, you need to move on who. Um, isn't that more sad? Yeah. Well, no, it's a lot to do there. It's a little, it's a little, it's a little. Oh, you're going to be supporting. And we're going to be right.
It is so important, not only to me, but my peers, my friends, younger generations, and anyone that identifies as an LGBTQ plus individual today. It isn't always a safe world for us, and I hope Monongalia Counties can be an accepting and loving place for queer youth. I hope after what I've said today, you will reconsider your original decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Olive. Next speaking is Erin Reedy.
I transferred to Morgantown High School at the start of my junior year. Before that, I was a student at Pikeview High School in Mercer County. I was relentlessly bullied throughout my time at Pikeview Middle and High School. Why? Because I was different. Because I was a transgender gay man living in rural southern West Virginia. During lunch, one boy had chocolate milk in his mouth and spat it on me and my new cloth three-ring binder. I had to throw my binder away, unable to ever get the stain of chocolate milk out. I ate lunch alone in the library for the rest of the year. There were two girls in my freshman gym class whom I had tried to be polite and friendly to. One took her metal water bottle and beat me in the head with it while I was bent over trying to get into my locker and gave me a concussion. The other broke my foot, which never healed the same. Three years later, it still gives me pain. It wasn't until I came to Morgantown High School that I finally felt accepted and safe. On the first day of my junior year, I entered my third-period class and was amazed to see a pride flag hanging up loud and proud in the classroom. I knew that I could finally tell a teacher, "Hey, this is my name and these are my pronouns," that I would be respected and addressed affirmatively, without aggression or being made to feel like I was a burden. It wasn't just this teacher. A sponsor for one of the clubs I'm in had a pride flag in her classroom. I never had her as an academic teacher, yet her room always felt like a haven for me and many other students. Everyone always asks, "Why do these teachers have all of these young LGBTQ plus students flocking through their rooms?" Those flags act like a beacon of safety for queer students. The second you walk through that door, you know, "I am safe." I am the president of MHS's Sexuality and Gender Acceptance, or SAGA, Club. Since the removal of the pride flags, I've had countless freshmen ask me, "What happened to the pride flags?" And I can look into their eyes and see that they are terrified. They are frightened because they don't understand what it may mean for them. First, it's the pride flags, and then what? What would you have me tell them? "I'm sorry, but some people think your existence is far too political for any proof that you exist to be represented. Your existence is too political to let anyone know that this may be a safe space for you to live without fear." I don't want anyone to live through what I have, to live completely on guard because they don't feel safe. I was able to change schools, attend MHS, and feel safe. Now, at the start of my senior year, it feels like we've taken ten steps back by forcing teachers to remove their pride flags. I wanted to become president of SAGA because I care about LGBT students and letting their voices be heard. You didn't join the Board of Education because you don't care about schools or you don't care about kids. You joined because you do care about kids. You want them to feel safe and happy at school. By removing the pride flags, we are afraid. We are unhappy. As president of the Morgantown High School Sexuality and Gender Acceptance Club, I ask you to let the teachers put their pride flags up.
Our next delegation, Marcus Tompkins.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marcus Tompkins, and I'm here representing around thirty or so campers, as well as myself, from the Appalachian Queer Youth Summit and as a former student of MHS. I have copies for this speech available for everybody after I'm done reading. Dear Monongalia County Board of Education and Morgantown High School Administration, we, the undersigned, are members of the Appalachian Queer Youth Summit, a West Virginia-based summer camp and program for LGBTQ-plus teenagers, as well as those from LGBTQ-plus families. We are writing to encourage you to allow teachers to display flags which represent symbols of our community and safety in our classrooms. Being a student isn't easy, and being a queer student in West Virginia definitely isn't easy. We represent students from high schools across West Virginia and those who have recently graduated. Some of us have left the public school system because it was unsafe for us, so we continued our education another way. Some of us have gone on to college and are experiencing a school environment where we can be ourselves for the first time. During our time in school in West Virginia, we have faced bullying for who we are, and many of us have even been mistreated by our own teachers and administrators. Many of us have never seen a pride flag displayed in our schools and have never had an LGBTQ teacher whom we can look up to, but we know what it would mean to us for us to see one. At our camp, we get to spend time with other people like us in a welcoming, safe environment. We hang up flags which represent our identities, and we know that the adults in camp support who we are. However, some of us who have returned to our public school systems this fall at camp was scary. We may not fit in, and we may become targets for bullying, and we don't all have people who support us for when that happens. Seeing a pride or Black Lives Matter flag in a classroom helps us know that we are welcome there, and seeing the teacher won't allow other students to mistreat our identities in that space. It could even help us start a conversation and find other students like us who support us. It may even let us know that we have a teacher who is like us, that we can look up to. Without these queer kids may be afraid to reach out, or they may not know who to turn to in times of need, which is something all schools encourage kids to do. It matters when students don't have to be so vigilant about their safety in a classroom. It allows us to feel safe to make the most of our education and learn. These flags make us feel safe, and while they may make those who don't like LGBT-plus folk uncomfortable, it doesn't make anybody less safe to see one displayed. When you removed these symbols from our schools, you made your LGBTQ-plus students feel less safe. You sent a message to the bullies and bigots of the world that the school does not support us. You made it harder for us to come back to school and to learn. People are leaving West Virginia, especially young people. The LGBTQ-plus community still lacks many protections statewide, which fuels our desire to leave the state in order to find more happy and accepting environments for us to call home. Knowing we have teachers who are doing what they can to make students feel seen and welcome in their classrooms is meaningful to us. For those of us who have graduated, we want to see more symbols of safety for the students who came behind us, not less. Please allow students to return their flags to their classrooms immediately and to help give students a little bit more of a sense of safety in their schools. And I'll be reading off the signatures of those who signed this document, as well as their age. Sincerely, Jamie, eighteen; Abby, seventeen; Emma, seventeen; Moxie, nineteen; Cecil, seventeen; Herb, eighteen; Cyrus, fourteen; Z, fourteen; Caspian, sixteen; Ariana, nineteen; Knight, sixteen; Savannah, eighteen; Carrie, eighteen; Jay, nineteen; Hannah, seventeen; Katie, eighteen; Cecily, eighteen; Hayden, fifteen; Gwen, sixteen; Lonnie, seventeen; Anna, eighteen; Aristotle, fifteen; Erin, seventeen; Aaron, nineteen; Joe, sixteen; Micah, seventeen; Roselia, sixteen; Bronte, seventeen; and me, eighteen.
Next delegation, Lonnie Medley.
Hello, my name is Lonnie Medley. I'm seventeen. Although I was fortunate enough to live in a town that is generally accepting when it comes to the LGBTQ-plus community and the black community, it is hard to live in West Virginia as a queer person of color. My whole life, I've had a homophobic and racist family on the white side, so it was hard enough dealing with it at home. The only reason I've been able to be openly queer and accept myself the way I am was because of my friends and, most importantly, my accepting teachers. Those teachers were easily identifiable because of their welcoming classroom, and that included the pride flag. When I found out teachers were also told to take down their pride flags, my heart stopped. How am I supposed to feel safe going to school when I don't know who I can be myself around? It honestly makes me so upset that we've made so much progress in getting people to support human lives, and now it's unacceptable to show support for minorities. Teachers are a huge influence on their students, and it's important that the ones who support their students are able to show that they are a safe space. If a teacher can't show that they're welcoming, how will any minority know that they are welcome? To Ms. Martin, the pride flag is not for you. It is for me and people like me. My intersectionality is what is represented here, not the black community as a whole. Removal of the flag only further marginalizes me and further makes me feel unwelcome. Our black lives matter, and especially those of us represented on the pride flag that should be proudly displayed by our teachers.
Okay, the next delegation is Ash Orr, and I would like to remind the speakers not to mention any names.
Hi, my name is Ash Orr. My pronouns are they, he. I am a trans member in this community. I am also proud to be serving as the chair of the Morgantown Human Rights Commission, as well as the president of Morgantown Pride. I am from a very conservative part of the state. When I was in high school, we had to hide being queer. If you were found to be queer, you were often verbally or physically assaulted. It was to the point that many of my peers and I were sent through conversion therapy so we could try to, quote, "fix ourselves." The reality is, is that nothing about us needs to be fixed. Being queer is normal, and it's worth being celebrated. During my time after conversion therapy, I was very suicidal. There was only one teacher in my school at the time, and this was back in 2006. She had one small rainbow pride sticker in her classroom, and I knew I could trust her, and she talked me down that evening. Her little rainbow pride sticker in her classroom is what saved my life at the age of sixteen. Having the simple symbol of a pride flag or sticker in a classroom saves lives. It shows that there's a safe space for them to be themselves, that teachers and staff see, value, and respect us as these students. So I'm pleading with you all to reverse this decision, protect our queer youth, provide them safety and inclusion, and allow our queer youth to flourish into queer adults, because not all of us make it to adulthood, and we have every right to. Thank you.
Our next delegation is Alex Miller.
Hi, my name is Alex Miller, and earlier this year, you guys voted on me to become a substitute teacher in Monongalia County. I'm here today because I care about the same issue that everyone here has talked about so far. When I first took my gig as a substitute teacher, I did not expect to fall in love with it. I expected it to be just like any other job. But little did I know, I would be at South Middle for my first day, and now I'm still a substitute teacher. It's the best job I've ever had. I'm here specifically because of the flag issue and to tell you why this is wrong. I'm an openly queer teacher. Not to say that I walk into every classroom and announce that I'm a non-binary lesbian, but I do look the part, so they figure it out. For many students that I've interacted with, I'm the first non-binary person they've ever met. A lot of the time, I'm the first gay person they've ever met. And one thing I can say for sure is that everyone benefits from interacting with people who are different than them and interacting with new concepts. The pride flag is a symbol of acceptance and a challenge to the status quo. I understand that I'm not going to make every single person accept acceptance, but I'm asking you to focus on that challenge. The truth is, is that whether it offends people or not, pride and the LGBTQ community exist. When students graduate from high school, they go into their adult lives, and they will encounter things that offend them or confuse them on the daily. It is important that students start learning how to deal appropriately with things that offend them or confuse them while they're still in school. They need the practice, and they need the guidance of their teachers, counselors, and administrators to become successful adults who will inevitably encounter things they do not like. When we take down pride flags, or references, or symbols of any kind that avoid offending anyone, we are setting up our future adults for failure. Thank you for your time.
Next delegation, Angel Smothers.
So I come to you as a parent and as a nurse. I was born and raised here in West Virginia, in the very southern part of the state. As my accent sounds like Tennessee, but it's West Virginia. I have lived here for nearly twenty years, and my husband and I both, from this southern part of the state, moved here. My husband went to medical school, and I got a doctorate in nursing from WVU, and we wanted to raise our children here. We believe that the Monongalia County School District is the best in the state. There's no doubt. As a matter of fact, we really organize our whole lives around being able to have our children go from kindergarten all the way through the senior high at Morgantown High School. So we've bought houses, we've kept jobs, we've done everything that we could to keep our kids in this school district. A few years ago, several years ago, my oldest child came out as non-binary gay. They had already graduated from high school when they came out, but they had a wonderful learning experience at Morgantown High School. Just the best in the state, in our opinion. So now I have a transgender son, who is a senior at Morgantown High School. And the fact that the teachers had the flags up provided really a beacon of light and hope to children. As a nurse, I want to tell you that the suicide, the suicide attempt rate for LGBTQ youth is around forty-five percent. With one affirming adult in their lives, that goes down to the national average for youth. But when we look at the number of homeless youth, they're almost all LGBTQ. They get kicked out of their homes. They get put out on the street. So oftentimes, the only place for an LGBTQ youth to find that one affirming adult that can then put them back down to the national average for suicide in youth is at school. For my children, when they see the flag, it doesn't mean anything political. I know we're in that environment of looking at the political piece. It doesn't mean political. It means this is a safe zone for you as a trans youth, as a gay youth, any member of the LGBTQ community. So when those flags came down, it was devastating, because now we know that that one adult, for all of those youth who do not have an affirming family at home, the flag was gone, the one affirming adult that they could have was gone, so their suicide rate risk factor is now forty-five percent again. It's not worth that. So I know that there are probably parents thinking this is a political move, but from the nursing standpoint, I want you to know it's not political. I've got a folder here with the national research and the data that supports where LGBTQ youth are in that suicide rate, and I've also got multiple research articles that show what school districts are doing to help offset that suicide rate for them at school. So I would love to leave that with you all, but I won't get into any of those details. But I want you to know the data is there to support this. Thank you.
Next delegation, Molly Kennedy.
My name's Molly Kennedy. I'm the community outreach director with the American Civil Liberties Union of West Virginia. I live in Morgantown. I'm a product of Mon County Schools. I taught, I student-taught at MHS, and after I earned my license, I was a substitute here as well. I appreciate all the things that my education in Mon County Schools gave me, but it didn't always give me a sense of safety. I can't remember seeing any signs of support for me as a young queer student in the county. Students tried to work out where they would be safe and largely found it with each other, forming their own safety nets. I made it through mostly unscathed purely because I could hide better than others. As a teacher, walking down some of the same halls, I wondered if I might be fired if I was found out, because we still lack these protections. Your teachers might be wondering the same thing today. Now in my work with LGBTQ youth, I'm heartened when I hear about rainbow flags and supportive clubs. This is not only important, it can be lifesaving, as you just heard, especially in West Virginia. We're a state tied dead last for LGBTQ acceptance. We have one of the highest numbers of trans teens per capita in the country. Kids aren't always respectful, and unfortunately, neither are school personnel, and our elected officials are often hostile. So we developed the Appalachian Queer Youth Summit. You heard a little bit about it earlier. It's a free summer camp for LGBTQ teenagers, where we bring them together and build community, and we teach them about civics, leadership skills, and how to advocate for the issues that they care about in their communities and in their state. But ultimately, what we do is not complicated. We treat them with respect. We call them by the names they want to be called. We use their pronouns. We hang up flags that help them feel represented. None of this is out of reach for anyone. It's simple, basic respect for who each of these individuals are as people. At the end of our first camp, one of our campers gave me an extra-long hug and told me, "I've never felt this safe anywhere before," and I've thought about that most days since. This was a seventeen-year-old. How sad and how unacceptable, that all we did was show them respect for who they are, and that was a sense of safety that they hadn't experienced in all of their years in a public school. These kids are kids. They are not a political issue to be debated. They need to know that they are valued as people. Do you know what happens when you make queer kids feel safe? I do. They let their guards down for once, and they laugh, and they tell you creative ideas, and they play games, and they write incredible pieces, and they show you their talents, and they're engaged, and they learn. You cannot truly effectively learn in an environment where you feel you have to remain on high alert. Knowing that your teacher believes that your identity is valid and that your life as a black student matters is important to the learning environment that is created. The very least that they deserve is to be safe, and you are legally obligated to provide a safe and welcoming environment for all students under state and federal law. The Tinker v. Des Moines Independent Community School District case in 1969 made it clear that teachers, students, and staff do not surrender their constitutional rights at the schoolhouse gates. And under the First Amendment, you may only regulate student and faculty speech that materially and substantially disrupts the learning environment. A silent symbol of safety to your students is not disruptive, but emboldening bigotry is. The fact that you have students who are scared to come to school in the face of these flags being removed and other students expected to comfort them while managing their own feelings should be proof enough of that. The policy at issue may be unconstitutionally vague, as it prohibits expressing the support or opposition of a particular point of view, but at the same time asserts that teachers reserve these rights. As a licensed teacher myself, if I were teaching in your schools, would I be prohibited from expressing the particular point of view that slavery was wrong, since I'm not endorsed in history? Would I be allowed to tell my ESL students that the incidents of xenophobia they experience are shameful and inappropriate, or would it have to be part of an approved lesson plan to do so? Are you clear on which issues you are and are not going to be considered as being political by others in this hyper-partisan time? Ultimately, I hope that you see some of these students in your county, and you're proud. I am. They're smart, and they're kind, and they're compassionate, and they are wonderful despite the many, many challenges that are put in front of them. The ACLU of West Virginia will be watching the situation closely to better understand how a school can purport to sustain constitutionally-protected rights while also suggesting that they may not express a point of view. Acknowledging the humanity and validity of your students, no matter who they are, just as they are, is a vital part of the job of educators. Teachers must be allowed to put their flags back up and give the safety net they provided back to these children. Thank you.
Next delegation, Brian Butcher.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm a parent of an MHS student and a Suncrest Elementary student, seventh ward city councillor in the city of Morgantown, and I am the community outreach coordinator for Morgantown Pride. I'm speaking here today to talk about two things. First, it's not related to what everybody was talking about, but instead, an issue of state safety. We have several students, and I've seen several videos on social media of students lined up outside of Morgantown High for extended periods of time while they wait to go into the school to pass through the metal detector. I don't believe that's creating a safe environment for the kids when they're having to wait outside there in a vulnerable position for that extended period of time. And I also, I guess, take some amount of objection to the fact that we're having teachers perform the metal detection when they walk into the school and having teachers act as security guards. I think that their primary function should be as educators, and I think that this system probably should have been thought through a little better and maybe implemented a little better. Happy to work with anybody on ideas on how we can make it more efficient so that our students can be safe when they're coming into the school. And the second issue is one that's been spoken on several times tonight. I'm also here to ask that direction be given to the school administration to allow the free expression, to reallow the free expression by kids and teachers while they're inside of the classroom. The pride flag, including its most recent iteration, is a symbol that has been established for decades to communicate an inclusive community that accepts all people, and when frequently displayed, works to break the stigma long held in our country against LGBTQIA people. Many of our students and teachers are part of this community, and their acceptance should not be a political issue. It's an acknowledgement of their basic human rights, their existence, and their acceptance and the love in our community, and that'll be all. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Next delegation, Megan Gandy.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Megan Gandy. I am a social worker, a professor, lesbian, a West Virginia native, but I come to you today as a concerned, tax-paying citizen. West Virginia is a sunny state located on the west coast of our country. West Virginia's lush coastal waters provide ample opportunity for its well-known citrus farming industry, with the highest number of sunny days out of any state in the Union. Wait a minute. You might be thinking to yourself, "I don't know what this lady's talking about," but she's wrong. If I was taking a quiz about West Virginia, I would definitely get a zero. But what if I insisted that I was right? What if I reached out to everyone that I could get to listen, especially the Board of Education, and insisted that you believe me? What if I then insisted that you change school practice to match my incorrect view? Well, that's what happened with this recent iteration of the Board of Education's decision, a decision influenced by someone who incorrectly asserted that the LGBTQ-plus pride flag represents her, a cisgender heterosexual black woman. That was simply false. The pride flag does not represent people that aren't LGBTQ-plus. Some might display it to show that they're an ally, and that's a good thing to do, but the flag has never and will never represent someone who's not in the LGBTQ-plus community. It's true that the black and brown stripes are there. The black and brown stripes in this updated Progress Pride flag are shown there to show the heightened struggles of black and brown LGBTQ-plus people. They face even greater struggles than those of us who are white in the LGBTQ-plus community, and that's because of racism. And so this person has simply shared incorrect, unfactual information. But unfortunately, this has prompted school leaders to take action. I understand that some teachers were recently asked to take down pride flags because of this information. And I would like to remind you why these pride flags are needed in the first place. As you've heard from all of these wonderful speakers, it's important personally, but it's also important, research tells us, it's effective. It's an effective educational intervention. And that's because LGBTQ youth are still at risk of dropout. I'm sure, as the Board of Education, you're concerned about dropout. And we don't want our kids to drop out of school. We want them to be successful in school. LGBTQ-plus youth drop out at a rate of up to thirty-three percent compared to the national average of eight percent. Nearly one-third of LGBTQ-plus youth didn't attend school over the past month because they felt unsafe. I have a handout of other research and information that shows the statistics on both what LGBTQ-plus youth face as risks, but also what helps them succeed. And so these statistics don't have to be forever. They can be reversed, and it starts with affirmations. Affirmations like, "I'm glad you're here today." "I'm glad you're at school." "I'm glad that I get to be your teacher." LGBTQ-plus students in these highly-affirming environments actually do better. Research shows that they stay in school, and pride flags is one part of creating that environment. Research shows that this investment makes a difference. Clearly, pride flags do help LGBTQ-plus students, but what about the rest of students? Well, there's research on that, too. Research shows that when pride flags are displayed in schools, all kids, no matter their sexual orientation- their sexual orientation or gender identity, have better school outcomes. So it's simply not true that all students suffer when we have Pride flags. It's actually the opposite. And so that's why I'm here today, to ask you to please reconsider this decision. This Pride flag is an educational intervention that's based in research and it's something that's not political. It's simply something that educators can do to help their students. I think that it makes sense and it ensures the success of all of our students.
Next, Reverend Jenny Williams.
Hi, I'm Reverend Jenny Williams. My pronouns are she and her. I'm a United Methodist pastor and I'm the faith organizer for the West Virginia ACLU. I'm also the parent of graduates of Mon County Schools. Twenty-seven years ago, I entered seminary in the South. And I was told twenty-seven years ago by a professor in the South that if I wanted to make my office a safe space for queer people, that I should put a pink triangle displayed in my office. It had not occurred to me at the time that that was something that I needed to do. I was safe wherever I went. And yet I desperately wanted to make sure that I could show the love of God to everyone and I was thankful that someone told me to put up a symbol that would indicate that. It is shameful that the church is not a safe place for everyone, but at least church is optional. And you know what isn't optional? School. School is not optional. At MHS, teachers have been told to take down symbols of safety. In a world that is against many of the students who have spoken so eloquently tonight, they had a place that was safe and now they feel threatened. I had a parent tell me this week that since these flags were taken down, their child has not felt safe going to school and has not gone to school. They are legally required to be there. Their parents are held liable if they are not there. And now the administration has made it harder for them to be there. Twenty-seven years ago, the symbol of safety was a pink triangle and then it evolved into a rainbow flag and now it's evolved yet again to a flag that has black and brown stripes. Twenty-seven years ago, I was told this piece of information and we are still fighting that here. It is unacceptable and I ask you to give your support to the administration, teachers, and students at MHS so that students can go to school, get on with the business of learning, and feel safe while doing it.
Next delegation, I think, is Rachel Fetti.
I don't know why I brought her along. My goodness. All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Rachel Fetti and I live at 131 Waitman, which is across the parking lot from the MHS High School. This year is my ninth year as an MHS parent and I'm looking forward to another five years by the time my youngest child graduates. Over the past nine years, I have brought an assortment of very special children to your doors. Cory, Sam, Ruby, and Axel have all brought what I like to call a one-of-a-kind point of view to the school. Because of their experiences, I am not exaggerating when I say that I love MHS. I love the teachers, the building, the staff, the marching band, the swim team, the football team, the wrestling team, and all the whatsits. It is not a perfect school, but it epitomizes to me a certain part of American life that I did not get to experience as a young person. I personally was homeschooled through high school so my parents could ensure a certain orthodoxy of thought. My parents could reassure themselves that I would not be exposed to ideas that they did not appreciate or ways of life that they did not approve of. It is the lack of this experience that makes me particularly sensitive to folks who want a public school experience to be more like a homeschool experience. It is my understanding today that a concerned parent brought her concerns to the county commission. I watched her comments. I want to be clear that I thought her concerns, that some points of view but not others are allowed, or that her people are being misrepresented, are important and should be considered. However, I do not agree with her conclusions. I would like to encourage you to consider the entire spectrum of your community as you decide how to proceed. In my homeschooling experience, my gay siblings were taught that being gay was a lifestyle choice. It was not chromosomal or genetic. Because being gay was a choice, my siblings, and yes, there are more than one, I had a lot of siblings, were exorcised, they were sent to conversion camp, and excluded from family and church. The outcomes were very predictable, as you've heard today. Because I had the experience as an eighteen-year-old of watching my fourteen-year-old sister choke on charcoal after she tried to poison herself because she wanted to go to school and because I had the experience of dragging my sibling to rehab after she developed an addiction to crack and alcohol and pills while denying that her partner was anything other than a roommate, I was incredibly relieved when my daughter came out to know that I had done everything in my power to ensure that she was loved, supported, and accepted in every place I forced her to go. Our church, Morgantown Church of the Brethren, is open and affirming. Our family is open and affirming. Her school, MHS, was a safe place for her to go. How did we know that MHS was a safe place for my kid? All of those flags, all of the pins and the stickers and the whatsits. Did I think for one moment that every faculty member wanted to destroy the patriarchy? No, I did not. Did I believe it was the policy of the school or the school board to be affirming? No, I did not. All I knew was that there were some teachers that were open about welcoming and accepting my child, any child, no matter what they were expressing as a gender or a sexual preference. To me, this is enough. I do not want or insist on orthodoxy of any thought but kindness and acceptance in the Morgantown Public Schools or MHS. I do not insist that any other parent be subjected to my opinions about anything, only that my kid and their kid and all kids have a safe place, a safe teacher, a safe environment to be the person that they are and the person that they want to become. Before coming today, because I am not an expert on public schools, homosexuality, or being black, I am a short, chubby, straight mother of beige. I spoke to my daughter and my daughter's friend, both recent graduates. To quote my little, young friend who is black and a member of the LGBTQ+ community, taking all of the flags down is going to hurt black and brown kids in the LGBTQ+ community and younger kids of every race. All students miss out on opportunities to learn about the spectrum of differences and diversity, even those that are invisible. I sympathize with the mother who spoke out at the commission meeting. As parents, we do not want our kids to be exposed to every idea. Moms think some ideas are just bad. However, it is possible and necessary to expect and want something more than neutrality from our public schools and public school teachers and administration. Inclusion is more than allowing a child to exist in a school. Inclusion requires acceptance, welcoming, and an invitation to be a part of all those weird and beautiful rituals of school life. The first game, the first dance, the first day of class.
Thank you, Ms. Fetti. I've given you two extra minutes.
Just a second.
Please wrap up.
I will. I promise. Inclusion requires some understanding that we don't need to know why every difference exists. We don't need to understand the root of our differences to understand that everyone at MHS is welcome and belongs. Thank you. I know you guys will make the best decision.
Our next delegation is Beth, I think it's Nardella.
Thank you. My name is Beth Nardella. I'm a parent of a new freshman at MHS. And I'm speaking here because I love her. During Mohegan Mania, she noticed Pride flags in several classrooms and as a result of this, she felt that the school was a welcoming place for her and her friends. She knew she would have allies and some safe spaces to go to. Over the last week, however, and I'm reading from an email that I sent the board over a week ago, so this is a little dated. Over the last week, however, many of those Pride flags have been taken down. When she asked some of her friends why, they told her that the teachers were asked to remove the flags and we both found this deeply upsetting. Pride flags aren't harmful. Pride flags hanging in a classroom send a message to students that all are welcome, no matter who you are. When LGBTQ kids are bullied more than other students, we need to be adding more Pride flags around the school, not taking them down. And I have some citations that I copied and pasted at the bottom of the email when I sent it originally. Further, LGBTQ kids have higher rates of suicide and suicidal thoughts than other students, higher rates of depression and other mental health issues, and self-harm. We should be doing all we can to support these youth. Please do not remove any more flags. Please put back the ones that were taken down. We have also asked friends who attend other schools and their Pride flags are still hanging. So it seems like this is an MHS situation. Like the other parent, when we moved back to Morgantown after graduate school, we bought a house in a neighborhood so that our kid could go to MHS. And we're so thankful that she's finally there and we really think that diversity matters and Pride matters and our kids' lives especially matter. And I know you wouldn't be doing this if you didn't feel the same.
Thank you, everyone. If you guys want to stick around and watch a board meeting, you're welcome to stay. If you want to make a break at this point, it's a good time, so. If someone stays. They really care about the business. They should have stayed.
Hundred percent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey. I can talk to you here. I had nothing, the speech at the County Mission, nothing.
It's just your petition. Yeah, thank you.
I just want to make sure for clarification.
And I will tell you, interestingly, there's...
But we don't respond to...
In school, out of school, everywhere.
It's mine?
Yeah, I didn't count four children.
Take one now. I'll take one.
Okay.
Pass this to Beth. I've got that one person. Okay.
Rachel Fetti, stay.
Hi, guys. We're going to move on in the order of business here and our next heading is School Performance, Student Outcomes, and Academics. And I'm surprised everyone didn't want to stick around for that. And it's my honor to introduce Assistant Superintendent DeValt, who has graciously decided to take over this meeting as Dr. Campbell is in Charleston, hopefully getting a National Teacher of the Year Award. And our Deputy Superintendent had some personal items to take care of, so Assistant Superintendent DeValt.
Thank you very much. I would like to introduce Courtney Crawford, who is our Director of Assessment, Accountability, and Counseling. And she's going to be sharing assessment results and accountability.
State Teacher of the Year. I guess I overstated the award she was after.
You're probably looking beyond.
Yes, she gets that next time. Go ahead, sorry. Yes.
I have a couple handouts for you all before I get started.
Is that the tea resters?
Yeah.
Persons would tell you you're burning a tree here.
I know. And you know what else happened is I thought that I hit double sided.
Thank you.
Apparently I didn't.
Courtney, how are you?
Good for you. Okay, so again, I need to put the Crawford on the Director of Assessment, Accountability, and School Counseling for Montague County Schools. And a little bit of dimming might help me be able to see these slides. There we go. So I was asked to speak with you all about our assessment results from the previous school year as well as provide some initial information about the accountability measures that will be released here in the near future. So to get us started, I have to turn on the flicker. So to start off talking about the assessment results, the data that I pulled for tonight's presentation is pulled directly from the State Department's public data website, which is called Student West Virginia. The reason I use that data for presenting is because it takes into account only students who are considered full academic year, which means that they were enrolled for at least one hundred and thirty-five days at the school where their scores are reflected. So in West Virginia, there are a series of assessments that are considered West Virginia metrics of academic progress. Several of those assessments are counted as summative assessments and the results from those are combined to provide the scores that are reflected for overall school and county performance. So when we're talking about our summative results, we're talking about a combination of scores from the West Virginia General Summative Assessment, which is our test for students in grades three through eight, the SAT School Day, which is our test for students in grades eleven, and then also the assessment that is the West Virginia Alternate Summative Assessment, which is for students in grades three through eight and eleven. That is a test that represents a smaller population of students. About one percent of Montague County students take the alternate assessment. When we get to the piece about the accountability data, we're also going to be looking at information related to the ALPA-21, which is for students who have limited, or for whom English is not their first language. That data is not reflected in the summative results, but it is important for accountability. So when we talk about assessment results, we typically always look at how did the county perform in comparison to the state? And so overall, the county, Montague County, which is reflected in the green, scored higher than the state at every single grade level for both reading, math, and also in science, which is not reflected here. Although I think overall proficiency is important to look at, I also think it's really important to look at the breakdown of where students scored across the different performance levels. So on our assessments, students based off of their scale scored are identified in one of four performance levels, with does-not-meet-the-standard being the lowest level and exceed-standard being the highest level, and that's represented in green. You can see I have a box around the two areas that are representative of Montague County. The other two are the results for the state. So we know that the students, we already know that we have more students in the blue and green combined than the state does. But it's also important to look at over time whether or not the numbers in the red are decreasing and the numbers in the yellow or orange on this slide are... and the numbers in the yellow or orange on this slide are increasing or decreasing. I am proud to share with you that Montague County students across the board have the highest percentage of students scoring in the exceed standards level across the state of West Virginia, in the state of West Virginia. So we have the highest performing group of students in the state of West Virginia. When we look at progress over time, so remember I talked a minute ago about looking also at shrinking red and shrinking yellow as far as performance levels? This slide represents overall proficiency over time. When we look here, we don't see a whole lot of movement as far as all students who are proficient. What is important to recognize, though, is that this slide does not represent the number of students who made gains within a performance level. So even though a student may not yet be at the proficiency level, are they making gains to get closer to that level by the time they graduate from high school? So it's important when we look at data to remember that we're not always talking about the same group of students. Every year, we're testing different students. And so what we will definitely be digging into now is, now that we've gotten through the overall proficiency piece, is of the students who did not meet the proficiency scale scores, what percentage of those students made gains from the previous school year? And that will come, we'll get some very hard data about that when we get our accountability results. So now we get to do some celebrating on assessment results. We're proud to say that our students continuously score at the top of the state on all of the performance levels and all of the subject areas tested. Our students last year scored or ranked number one in science and number two in ELA in math across the state. And as I mentioned before, we have the highest percentage of students in the exceed standards level. Additionally, and I haven't talked much yet about the SAT School Day, but we had 28% of our 11th graders who took the SAT School Day last year are Promise eligible based on their assessment results from last year. So they still have other things that they have to fulfill. They still have to meet their GPA and things of that nature. But 28% of them already have their assessment results taken care of at the, you know, cost of the State Department for providing that assessment. So a little more data on those Promise students. 367 students met at least one Promise indicator, with the majority of those kids passing the English benchmark. So that's good information. One of the nice things about the SAT being one of our assessments is that it also gives us comparative data for across the state. So on the SAT, one of the pieces that they pull out is a score called the College Readiness Benchmark. And what that reflects is the percentage or the likelihood that a student is to score a passing grade, earn a passing grade in an entry-level English or math class in college. And so for Montague County, 32% of our 11th graders who took the SAT School Day last April met both of those benchmarks. 58% met the benchmark for English, for the English assessment, and 34% met the math benchmark, compared to the state and national test takers for that same day of assessment. So we can say that our students are performing above and beyond what students are doing across the country and also outperforming their peers across the state. Going along with more information related to the College Board, we also, as you all know, have a pretty high percentage of students who continue to take AP assessments. Last year, we had 653 students take 1,219 AP exams with a 76% passing rate. So I had to do some digging today to get some national comparative data on how AP scores were across the country. And what I was able to calculate based off of some man who apparently has inside information and had it all posted on Twitter, it looked pretty official, is that the national average for passing is 65%, which is pretty consistent with what we've seen in previous years. So again, outperforming what students are doing across the state. We also will be able to celebrate that we had 223 AP scholars, which means that the students scored a minimum of three on a varying number of assessments that they have taken, with a breakdown of students all the way up to scholars with distinction. Actually, the majority of our students who qualified as AP scholars are being recognized with distinction, which is pretty exciting. Okay, now onto the exciting part of the presentation, talking about school accountability. So West Virginia has changed their accountability format for several different, over several years. We're lucky to say, we're fortunate to say, that there are no changes for this year as far as school accountability. Several years ago, we moved from, what was the A through F model for accountability, into a balanced scorecard model. The information that they post on the balanced scorecard is posted publicly, and I believe that that will go live sometime tomorrow after the state board meeting. So the balanced scorecard represents a series of indicators across each school. And every school receives a rating on these indicators that are broken down by academic and student success. The academic indicators include academic performance, academic progress, graduation rates at the high school level, and English language, English learner proficiency for those students who take the ALPA-21. This is a generic scorecard, by the way. This is not one reflective of Montague County. The student success indicators include attendance, behavior, and at the high school level, students who are on track for graduation, which is a percentage of students at the 10th grade level who have met a certain number of credits by a certain time, and post-secondary achievement, which is the percentage of students who, by the time they've graduated, have either passed an AP test or become a CTE completer. So the way the scorecard works is that each of these indicators receive a numeric calculation or value that corresponds with one of the four performance levels that are similar to those from the state assessment. On the scorecard, a school's results are reflected by the color being represented in that field and also by a gradient scale. So as the amount of that box that is filled up with the color represents how close you are to being at the next level. So in this example, these elementary schools at the top have a very thin yellow line for their academic performance, which means that although they have, they are scored as partially meets the standard, they're just barely there. And likewise, in math at the middle school, they're almost to the next level, which would be partially meets the standard. So it's a, it gives you a little more information than just a solid color. In addition to, and this is why we talked before about, it's also important to recognize the progress made within an achievement level. So in addition to the colored, the color scores and gradient, gradient scale, schools also have annual targets for academic progress that they are expected to meet. And this is a requirement in the ESSA Plan, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act Plan, that schools also strive to meet an annual target. And those initial benchmarks were set originally based off of data from the 2016, 17 school year. They've since been adjusted due to the pandemic to, so that our baseline is the 2020, 2021 assessment results, with targets going out to, I believe it's 2034. So annual targets up to that point. So if a school, a school may have scored in the lowest performance level, however, they've made progress from one year to the next as expected by what the state has projected. And so they may have a checkmark in their, in one of these fields representing that. In addition to the scorecard data, schools can receive one of three designations. I don't know a whole lot about these just yet, but I do know that CSI schools, which are comprehensive support and improvement schools, are the lowest performing schools in the state. The comprehensive and additional targeted support, which is the center one listed, our schools, as well as the last item listed, which is additional targeted support, these are all schools that have some deficiencies related to some subgroup performance and some specific targets. So what I do know about these is that the initial, initial expectation is for some goal setting and reflection in the strategic plan specifically related to areas of considered deficiency, and that the state will be looking for progress on those areas. Now for the newest area of accountability, which this is what the handout that I provided you shares or covers. So this year, districts will also be receiving an accountability result. And the data for the district accountability is broken down into the academic and student success, which is similar to what the schools have, and then also a measure of county operational effectiveness based on some indicators of efficiency. The data for our district accountability will not be publicly posted, but it will go to, directly to the state or to the county superintendent. So there may be something of this nature posted on the, on the public site with regard to academic and student success indicators. I believe it's the second piece that will just go straight to the superintendent. But one of the pieces that the state will be looking for is if a county has an area that is in the red on one of these indicators, they'll be considered on watch for this initial year. And what on watch means is exactly what we talked about before related to the designations for schools. The county or the state will be asking us to look for, to collaborate, to come up with some initial goals, and also to revisit our strategic plan to make sure that we're addressing those specific needs associated with some perceived deficiencies. The timeline, and this is in your handout also, but this initial year, schools will be considered on watch. If there isn't progress made in those areas, then there might be some additional support provided by the State Department to help increase our results. Related to the county operational effectiveness and indicators of efficiency, this is the piece that is very new to, to all counties in West Virginia. So every department essentially that is housed in the Board of Education has some measures of, for what the state expects to see for those departments. So these include the CTE, child nutrition facilities, federal programs, finance, personnel, special education, state required data collections, which is one of my departments, transportation, universal pre-K school readiness, and county board effectiveness. So within the handout that I've given to you all, it does break down what exactly the state is looking for in each of those departments. And each department will receive some sort of a score. And then they'll be considered as either meets requirements or needs assistance. And if a, if an area is considered needs assistance, then there will be some monitoring that's, and goal setting that's required by the state. Clear as mud?
Who will do that?
Which part?
The monitor, I mean, if the state's going to monitor, are they going to have a new accountability department if you will? I just know there's, the staff is not huge.
Right. So what was explained to us this summer is that if you think back to when there used to be OEPAs, and there used to be this very kind of gotcha with a checklist, and if you don't have X, Y, Z, then, you know, then there's going to be sanctions or whatever put upon you. The message we received from the State Department is that is not what they want this to be like. Their goal is to make this a proactive relationship where we're identifying things in advance that could be issues, and they're putting in layers of support to help you address those issues. So in the initial year, I don't believe there will be much requirement or much oversight done by the State Department, but they're going to be looking for the next round for improvements to be made. And if improvements aren't made, then they may be coming in to provide some additional guidance or support. So they have beefed up that department a little bit. It's now, I believe, Charlene Coburn from the State Department who is over the Accountability Office. And they do have at least four or five folks that are on their team to help with that monitoring.
We heard the same thing at Charleston this past weekend.
Okay.
They weren't looking to come in with a heavy hand. They want to come in and help. Now, if you don't respond, I'm sure they'll come with a heavy hand later.
Sure. And honestly, I think, I appreciate it because there are things that sometimes we just do because it's how we've always done it. But maybe there's a different way that would yield a better result. And so sometimes it takes an outside perspective to give us that, that insight.
I just think it's going to be hard. I mean, I still think that's a small group
Right.
for the whole state.
Sure.
I guess is my, my issue for really going to get.
Right.
You're going to get assistance. And maybe they're going to look to be growing that, but.
I think they will, because they were talking about checking the minutes of the board meetings and seeing what's covered. They covered a part of how the information is entered into the minutes, so they can just click and go add it.
And that's actually been kind of a requirement anyway.
Right.
But I just, I just think it's a tiny department for, for 55 counties and then how many schools? I, you know, and I think there's going to be some areas that are going to need more support. And sometimes it's hard to do that through a Zoom meeting or a long-distance effort.
Yeah, they were looking more as a, when we spot checked this particular, this wasn't what we were looking for. So I don't know if that's going to increase.
It's going to be interesting.
That was my third time through, but they got us at the board's press conference retreat, too. So great. You did, you did a really good job presenting the way this works. It was a lot more clear and there was a lot less arguing, so. There's no other comments from the board. Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you, Courtney.
Have you got something? Go ahead, wait.
Well, you have a question?
No, no, you did. I was pointing.
Yes. So needless to say, we always hear how, you know, West Virginia scores here, and we're in 47th, and blah, 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 blah. So my question was, is there a way to extrapolate our data to, even though I realize some of these assessments we're using are statewide and maybe not, may not have a national comparative test over state A or state B, is there a way to pull information out to see where we really stand? Because I would say, and I think this board's, you know, and our county and our teachers and everyone has said for years, it's wonderful to think that we can have some of the highest scores in the state, but we're also interested in being nationally competitive. We're interested in creating a learning atmosphere with new ceiling. We're interested in, in maybe, we put emphasis in different areas than maybe some other area, other counties. So is there any way to pull out any of this information and compare it on some kind of a national table, if you will?
Well, so with the 11th grade test, you can. With our, with our test for three through eight, you really can't. It's an assessment of West Virginia standards. And so it doesn't, it wouldn't hold up to what other states are doing. So we are the only state who uses the West Virginia General Summative Assessment. So we aren't really able to compare our results nationally.
And for several years, I know we used one that was used in other states.
Sure. We used to be a part of the Smarter Balance Consortium.
Yes.
And so at that time, we could look at other states who were part of that consortium and see how they did and where we lined up. Even though we were doing that, it was still not completely an accurate picture because we were still using West Virginia standards on our questions that aligned specifically with West Virginia standards, whereas some of the other states were using questions that were specifically aligned to, I believe Maine was one of those states. And so you could kind of get a general idea, but it wasn't a perfect match for the same assessment. I don't know if that makes sense.
Well, no, it does. But I guess my thing is, and we've, we've always kind of said this, there are some counties that do better in certain areas. And to get lumped in, oh, you're all awful, basically, or you're all only at this level nationally, is not accurate.
Sure. And even the NAEP assessment is not really a, a good way of saying where our state falls or where, where a county falls, because they only attest a sampling of students across the state. So it's unfortunate, but we really, there really isn't currently a way with the summative assessment to do something that's comparative across the states. assessment to do something that's comparative across the states.
Because I think even, you know, as we talk about economic growth or wanting to attract a certain level of student or family, or even as the university's recruiting.
Sure.
It you constantly get dinged, oh, well, gosh, here's your, here's where you guys are. And we've always felt, not just here, but in other places, that is not an accurate portrayal of really what goes on academically, you know, here.
Nope.
It's unfortunate, yeah.
Unfortunate as that is, absolutely.
But what we do have are the national tests that we we can look at at the high school level. We can say how we compare on those assessments. It's just not something that we have for our younger grade levels. If there is something out there, I'm not, I'm not certain.
Well, and I mean, I even look at our own legislature. They used all those those numbers to create maybe some different legislation that if we could have been more accurately portrayed for how it really is, maybe some of that legislation would not have occurred. So I just, it's.
And it's difficult because you see a percentage, but there has to be more understanding associated with that those numbers and what that truly means. You know, it's not a surprise that if you think of a normal bell curve, you would expect 50-some percent to fall in in the middle. So it's it's difficult, it's a tough pill to swallow when you see that proficiency number. But again, I bring us back to the number of students who are making growth and who are making gains, and that's really where we need to focus. We need to make sure that all of our students are making progress towards mastery, and our assessments don't assess every single grade level. They only assess a sampling of students. So more information, I believe, needs to be collected on are the issues with student performance? What are the issues with student performance? The students who are not showing growth? What additional supports do those students need? Is it truly academic support? Is it engagement with the test? Is it effort towards wanting to demonstrate progress? Is was there something that happened the night before that impacted student pro or performance? So there's a lot that goes into this, and we know that assessment results are truly just a snapshot in time, and we hope that our students perform their best, and that's all we can hope for. I do still believe that we have a lot to be proud of, of what our students have been able to do over the past several years. Two years ago, we tested a very small percentage of students because it wasn't required that all students participate in testing. This past year, we got very close at almost every level of students participating in the assessment with our high schools really struggling to get kids to show up for the 11th grade SAT School Day. I'm confident that our teachers have really been working hard to make sure our students are prepared, and the resources that we have been given with the I Ready curriculum has really made a difference in making sure students are demonstrating progress throughout the year. Those are the things that individual student progress throughout the year is where we can hang our hat, because we know our students are making gains and are going to be performing well throughout high school or throughout their educational career.
Well.
It's just tough because we can't compare.
We can't compare, and the other thing is, I think we've always looked at testing not as a punitive thing, but as this is where more resources need to be put, and this is where maybe more resources need to go to certain areas in the county that have might have more challenged communities. And it's it it never feels like it's a level playing field as we're trying to figure out how all that goes.
Sure. And when you look at all data, remember, it's covering every single population of students. And so digging into the specific demographic groups to help maybe identify where we need some additional support could also be helpful.
Just got to convince the kids to take the test to help their school, their school.
Well, and to to put them their best self forward, that that's a reflection of themselves too.
And the school as a collective group.
Yes. So exciting news is that we did send out our paper results last Friday, and this week, students will also who took the West Virginia General Summit of and the SAT School Day will also receive a personalized video report that will be sent to their K-12 email. These were created by the State Department, and they're they depict the student as though they were a kayaker on the New River, and how that student's score is reflected to against students in their school and students in their state. It uses the student's name. It talks about, it gives some additional ideas of specific areas where the student might need some improvement. It's really a neat program, some links to additional resources for parents, and I hope that our families will find that as a valuable tool to truly understand what those assessment results mean and learn more about what their child has been able to show.
All right. I want to apologize, I guess somewhat, for the abruptness of abruptness of my note, but we cannot have public comments during the regular portion of the meeting, so. Thank you, Courtney. Excellent, as always. Assistant Superintendent, I'm going to take the reports, discussions, and follow-up action out of order and move E up to the top.
Oh, okay.
It's the Coffee Roasters.
Oh.
Nice.
Okay, all right.
Wait a second.
Oh, okay. It's my pleasure to announce to our community and our system that Amber Nichols, goosebumps, Amber Nichols, representing Montague County Schools Teacher of the Year, has been named the West Virginia Teacher of the Year. She teaches at Eastwood. So congratulations.
Let's talk UHS coffee.
Oh, sure. It's a pleasure to have this on our agenda. University High is proposing an agreement for the Coffee Tree Roasters Corporation, and it's a pleasure to have Mrs. Kim Green, the Principal of University High, and Mrs. Katrina Simmali, the Assistant Principal, to present this information to the Board of Education.
Thank you for having us tonight. We did want to introduce to you, we're very excited to have the coffee shop in our school. It'll it will be a collaborative effort. We originally started with the St. Charles and the Burger, they have a coffee card every Friday, so they put out an order form to teachers, and teachers can order snacks or coffee or tea, and then their students deliver it every week.
What time is that?
On Friday.
We're off for brunch.
So we wanted to expand it so that we can have several groups working together. We're now going to bring in our business classes and our baking and pastry classes. So baking and pastry treats were prepared for you, and I can go ahead and let our students pass those out. And we also have coffee from the Coffee Roasters for you, so we'll share those. Can you go first? Mrs. Peyton, she's going to give you plates, and then I can go follow with some treats for you. And then Emma and Isabella are here with us, too. Emma is going to manage the baking and pastry. And then Isabella, she's going to talk to you about some of the things that we will have with the Coffee Roaster.
Thank you.
All of these treats were made by my side.
Thank you. Give her the map.
Thank you. Thank you. Um. Dude. You have to help.
Thank you very much.
Come on. Trying to sweeten this up.
It's okay.
Need that.
Thank you. How nice. I like your fingernails. Those are UHS nails, huh?
Oh, my God. Which one's best?
Thank you.
I got kids, I'll be taking this stuff.
Your regular.
Just regular.
These are, these ones, the lighter ones are snickerdoodles. These ones are pumpkin. These ones are.
I'll take the pumpkin. Thank you. Oh, gosh. So what is that?
Oh, yes. Sorry. I'm taking a nap.
Oh, all you want is for breakfast. Well, no. Yeah, actually.
Thank you so much. Very nice.
Oh, my, thank you.
Give me one. My kids are going to be sweetened up when I get my snacks.
I'll take the caramel.
You didn't feed him dinner.
Now I have to have someone else.
I'm good on this.
Oh, gosh. Well, you know what? My husband will be thrilled. I can't taste anything, and I can't eat.
Kim, the best way to get stuff approved by the board is to feed them candy. Get them sugared out. I don't think I want to be sugared up for a board meeting. I might be.
Thank you very much.
Anyway. Give me a brown one.
Your dog?
My wife's dog. She knows the dog. It's a goat cut or a cart. I'll pass, I'll make a mess out of it.
All right, thank you. You just got here too late.
You guys can pass them out and eat them out there.
So this is Isabella. She, I think you have handouts from her. She looks together a little bit of the coffee shop we're benefiting from.
So I'm Isabella, and I'm here on behalf of the Business Program, our Business Series, and Brew. So there's my little presentation I put together. So it says, I think the coffee shop, the Brew Coffee Shop, is a great opportunity, not only for me, but for UHS students. They will see this as a way to experience what it's like to run a business and also donate and volunteer hours back to the school. One day, I hope to own my own business, and I think this is a great opportunity for me to get valuable experience in an actual workplace environment. Working at the Brew will teach me management, customer service, marketing, and accounting skills, not only for me, but for our UHS business students. I am excited to use this as an opportunity to get real work experience and to earn money for our business program. We will learn about every part of a business and how to successfully run a business in the real working environment. The Brew will prepare me to work and lead others when I leave UHS. I expect everyone to be safe and on task and take care of their responsibilities. Our students and staff are very excited for this opportunity.
Good job. Okay, that's all. [applause]
Yes, thank you for this. We really appreciate it. I was really excited to meet you, so I'm glad I'm on this floor. But the Brew will provide our students with engaging opportunities to learn and to allow them to grow up in a authentic workplace. Students will be college and career ready because of the curriculum that incorporates all aspects of marketing, engineering, and finance into a business industry learning environment. My goal is to give students an understanding of high-quality working environment while also connecting students to learning to build leadership skills, competence, knowledge, and profitability. So thank you for this. We really appreciate it. You're welcome to coffee.
Thank you.
I think I'm serious.
The Superintendent recommends approval.
I need a motion. Second, anybody?
Second.
All right, three seconds. Wow, that is the first three seconds I've ever got. That was quick. So any discussion, board members? Hearing none, all in favor. Give me one second. Did I keep this right? All in favor of the UHS slash Coffee Tree Roaster corp contract as presented, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same?
Start brewing.
Okay, I moved you guys up from from the bottom of the list so you guys can go home and do some studying. Good luck.
Great initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, Courtney, you weren't in that group.
I never seen it. No, Bailey, he barely.
Okay, Assistant Superintendent, health updates.
Hi. Under reports and discussion, health updates. At this time, I have no update to related to any health concerns in Montague County Schools.
Awesome. Moving on to B.
All right. B is slight revision. It's a web design, hosting, and/or support services agreement. The Superintendent recommends approval of this endeavor, this agreement.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any discussions?
What had to get changed?
Well, it's it's not a slight revision. It is, this is a new presentation for students. Actually, it's will permit University High School and Morgantown High School students to leave the building at approved, prior approved times. It really does create safety and welfare, safe welfare for our students. They will sign in to be able to leave for their access classes, for mentoring, and things of that nature. The program will provide exit tickets and evidence that the students have left the building. And I do have Mrs. Green here that can answer any other questions that you may have.
Any more questions? I asked that same exact thing today.
Well, my question was so everybody else knows what's going on here, why we're doing that.
Thank you. Hearing no other questions, all in favor of slight revision, web design, hosting, and/or support services agreement, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? C, and we're going to have to.
Yes, at this point, I'm an employee of St. Francis Sales Central Catholic School, and I am going to refuse myself from item C and D accounts payable addendum.
Section C, subject C, is the St. Francis Pre-K Collaborative Contract for the school year 2022-23, and the Superintendent recommends approval.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Same. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, all in favor of the St. Francis Pre-K Collaborative Contract, fiscal year 2022-2023, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Motion passes. Assistant Superintendent D.
D is accounts payable addendum, and the Superintendent supports the approval, recommends the approval for this.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the accounts payable addendum as presented, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Motion passes. Assistant Superintendent D.
D is accounts payable addendum, and the Superintendent supports the approval, recommends the approval for this.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the accounts payable addendum as presented, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Someone go get Dan. Okay, Assistant Superintendent, we're down to F.
All right. We are at the M-Tech EMS Program Agreement, and this provides an affiliation agreement with the Technical Center, with the University Hospital, UHA, and the Superintendent recommends approval.
Need a motion?
We accept the recommendation.
I'll second that. Any comments from the board members? Questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the M-Tech EMS Program Agreement as presented, signified by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Assistant Superintendent seven?
For the consent agenda, Superintendent recommends approval as presented for items A through L. A is the expenditures exceeding $3,000. B, the payment of salaries and accounts payable. C, student trips. D, the renewal of West Virginia University School of Medicine Exercise Physiology, Occupational Therapy, Physical Therapy, Field Work Agreement. E is the renewal of the Inspire Energy Jambuk Agreement.
environment. My goal is to give students an understanding of high-quality working environment while also connecting standards to learning to build leadership skills, competence, knowledge, and profitability. So thank you for this. We really appreciate it. You're welcome to coffee.
Are you thinking?
I think I'm serious.
The superintendent, um, recommends approval.
I need a motion.
So move.
Second, anybody?
Second.
All right, three seconds. Wow, that is the first three seconds I've ever got. That was quick. So, uh, any discussion, board members? Hearing none, all in favor. Give me one second. All in favor of the UHS slash Coffee Tree Roaster Court, uh, contract as presented, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Start brewing.
Okay, I moved you guys up from, from the bottom of the list so you guys can go home and do some studying.
Good luck.
Great initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, Courtney, you weren't in that group.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Assistant Superintendent, health updates.
Hi. Um, under reports and discussion, um, health updates. At this time, I have no, uh, update to, related to any health concerns in Montague County schools.
Awesome. Moving on to B.
All right, B is slight revision. It's a web design, hosting, and/or support services agreement. The superintendent recommends approval of this endeavor, this agreement.
I need a motion? Second. Thank you. Any discussions?
What had to get changed?
It's the name.
Well, it's, it's, it's not a slight revision. It is, this is a new presentation for, um, students. Actually, it's, um, will permit University High School and Morgantown High School students to leave the building at, um, approved, prior approved times. It really does create, um, uh, safety and welfare, safe welfare for our students. Um, they will ha- sign in to, um, be able to leave for their access classes, for, um, mentoring, um, and things of that nature. The program will provide, um, exit tickets and, um, evidence that the students have left the building. And I do have, uh, Mrs. Green here that can answer any other questions that you may have.
Any more questions? I asked that same exact thing today. I was like, what's the slight revision?
Well, my question was so everybody else knows what's going on here, why we're doing that.
Thank you. Uh, hearing no other questions, all in favor of slight revision, web design, hosting, and/or support services agreement, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? C, and we're going to have to, uh...
Yes, at this point, I'm an employee of St. Francis Sales Central Catholic School and I am going to refuse myself from item C and D accounts payable addendum.
Section C, subject C, is the St. Francis pre-K collaborative contract for the, um, school year 2022-23, and the superintendent recommends approval.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Uh, any questions? Okay, all in favor of the St. Francis pre-K collaborative contract fiscal year 2022-2023, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same. Motion passes. Assistant Superintendent D.
D is accounts payable addendum, and the superintendent, um, uh, supports the approval, recommends the approval for this.
Need a motion?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, all in, uh, favor of the accounts payable addendum as presented, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same. Someone go get Dan. Okay, Assistant Superintendent, we're down to F.
All right, we are at the MTEC EMS program agreement, and this provides an affiliation agreement with the technical center, with the university hospital, UHA, um, and the superintendent recommends approval.
Need a motion?
Can we accept the recommendation?
I'll second that. Any comments from the board members? Questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the MTEC EMS program agreement as presented, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same. Assistant Superintendent, seven.
For the consent agenda, superintendent recommends approval as presented for items A through L. A is the expenditures exceeding $3,000. B, the p- payment of salaries and accounts payable. C, student trips. D, the renewal of West Virginia University School of Medicine exercise physiology, occupational therapy, physical therapy, fieldwork agreement. E is the renewal of the Inspire Energy Jembook Agreement. F is the renewal of Wheeling University Student/Teacher Agreement. G is the Source Skyview Before and After School Care. H is the pre-K collaborative contracts for the, um, school year 2022-23. I is the renewal of Suncrest Middle, the City of Morgantown PRO Officer Agreement. J is the renewal of the Morgantown High, City of Morgantown SRO Officer Agreement. K is the renewal of West Virginia University Extension Services Agreement Nutrition Program, and L, um, would be our minutes.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
For part B, uh, let me see, make sure I get it right, your accounts payable invoice detail on page 85. I saw that $45,944 was spent on the Stonewall Retreat, and my concern is that is a first year teacher salary that we spent on that. I don't know why we just don't have it at the waterfront, uh, spend money in Montague County. I would like to see that in the future. That's all I have to say about that.
And isn't that title money that has to be spent on administrative, uh...
Yes, it is paid out of title tip monies.
Which has to be on administrative training and...
Yes, professional development.
Professional development.
Yes.
I'm not saying we don't spend it. I'm saying we could have it here in Montague County. Keep the money in the county.
But I did, I did not want people to think that we were taking other funds away from teachers, a first-year teacher.
No, I never said that. I said it's the equivalent of a first-year teacher.
Yes, but I, I guess that's what I just wanted to clarify.
Right. I was making a comparison.
Okay.
It is valuable professional development that, um, we do for leadership growth and building leadership capacity.
I believe it. I, I, I agree with it 100%. I think we could do it cheaper here in Mon County and spend the money in the county.
And, okay, thank you. Right.
Okay, any other pullouts? Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same?
A warning of contract, um, we have, uh, for Mountain View resurfacing of the basketball court, and, um, the superintendent recommends approval.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sandy, what do you?
Okay, um, I have that the recommendation will be, um, awarded to Landscape Plus. Uh, it is the lowest bid. It was $26,426, and again, this is to resurface the basketball court at, um, Mountain View.
Okay, any, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of awarding the contract for Mountain View resurfacing of basketball courts to Landscape Plus, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same. I do not have a board member update. Does anyone have any?
I do. I would just like to acknowledge the delegation that was here today. I think it's worthy of more conversation, um, so I would like to see it on a future board meeting agenda.
Any other board member updates?
No, I, I want to agree with, uh, Jen on that. I think it's worthy of being on a future agenda.
Want to make a motion?
I motion to have it on a future agenda for discussion, preferably sooner than later.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of putting the, uh, concern from the delegation on a future board meeting, which, I may get that, I don't have that delegation in front of me anymore, uh, signified by aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Okay.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent two.
That has been noted.
No doubt.
So...
My only update is on October 10th, I'll be going to the Extension Services Committee meeting if anyone has anything they would like to bring to that committee's attention.
Thank you.
What time is that meeting?
The Extension Services, 6 o'clock.
So it's an evening?
It's a 6 o'clock on, uh, Monday evening, yeah, the 10th.
If anybody has any concerns and they want to get those to Nancy if they can't be there. All right.
All right.
Anything else? Assistant Superintendent, we're down to policies.
We're to policies. Policy, I'd like to, um, present for, um, uh, approval, policy 2215, required courses of instruction for the first reading.
Do I need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's back to you.
Okay, um, for, again, the first reading, um, again, the superintendent recommends approval for policy 2432.
We need to get the first one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me, uh, I was, let's push that to Jennifer, the 2215.
Oh, okay.
Can you give us a little bit on that one?
That one you discussed at the last meeting.
Okay. And there's no changes to what we talked about?
No, there's not.
All right, thank you. All in favor of policy 20, any comments in the board members? Any polit- any comments in, uh...
We did not receive any public comments on this policy.
Okay, thank you. All right, all in favor of policy 2215, required courses of instruction for the first reading, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same. Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, now we'll do policy.
Go ahead.
2432, driver's education, um, first reading, and again, the superintendent, um, recommends approval.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that one. Uh, anybody have any questions? Is there any clarification? Legal?
No, this has not yet been put out for public comment, um, as being first reading. So this will be put out for public comment tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, all in favor of, uh, policy 2432, driver's education going out for first reading, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same. Thank you.
Policy, um, 2625, civics education test for the first reading, and the superintendent recommends approval.
Okay. I need a motion?
Second.
Okay. Any questions on this one from the board?
I actually do have some.
Go ahead.
Um, so in our progression, we put civics in what grade?
12th grade.
So it's in 12th grade, and it's also, uh, married with the personal finance?
Yes.
As part of that?
Yes.
Curriculum. Okay, but needless to say, personal finance is not part of the, uh, naturalization test, which this refers to. So my question is, is there a better grade to put this in? Because I would say from more often than not, uh, I didn't know if it had to be in 12th grade or if that was just our county procedure that put it in 12th grade. I probably received more constructive criticism from parents saying that their children do not know how to write a check, do not know how to reconcile a checkbook if they do know ever write a check, do not how, know how to do personal finance. So I've asked, I always ask this question, is there a better time to do this in a different way to get more engagement and hopefully more retention? So I don't know if there is or not, and I don't know if any of the board members received that same constructive criticism, if you will.
I get constructively criticized about not teaching this stuff all the time. That and I don't teach cursive, I heard.
Which we do.
We do teach cursive.
Which we do teach cursive, yes. So I didn't know if anybody else had any particular feelings about this, or if you guys, uh, whenever it's time to talk about this again, if you could better explain what grade maybe this should be in, or do we need to leave it in 12th grade? Or I can't, I cannot figure out in my own mind if students, uh, are not absorbing as much because they're so anxious to graduate, that they are just, it's just in and out, and I don't really know. So I don't know what our social studies folks feel about this, or...
Are you, you're asking specifically about the fact that we teach in 12th grade the civics classes? You're talking more about the administrative thing, or are we talking, because it says services between ninth and 12th grade?
Yeah, and, and I, I thought it had to be 12th grade, uh, uh, to be honest. I was under the impression it had to be the senior year, but now I'm wondering, well, this says ninth grade, so obviously...
It always has been, um, a 12th grade course, and, uh, you know, now including the financial literacy part. In the past, um, with policy, um, West Virginia Board of Education Policy 2510, um, the sequence of, uh, social studies courses has changed, but, um, and, and we changed that with, um, integration of AP, um, courses as well. But it is, um, students can take that out of order. We just try to make sure that through record keeping, that we, um, satisfy the courses that our students are required to take in, um, high school for high school graduation.
Well, I mean, since they have to do this anyway, I, I guess that's my question. Could, 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 maybe when you guys come back with this policy again, could you tell us what the instructors, the social studies departments at these high schools think?
Sure.
Because I'm, I'm really wondering if we could not, uh, ask for a waiver or do it in a different sequence, that it wouldn't totally disrupt anything, and maybe there'd be some better results, um, for retention of information? Because again, the civics information is very important and, uh, you know, branches of government, every, everything, how a law's written, uh, I mean, there's just so much in it, but it, when you, uh, I hate to say it, most men on the street interviews, nobody seems to think that anyone's taught anybody this. No one seems to retain much, much of this information.
We teach it, most of it on Instagram at the time. It's taught.
Oh, I believe it's taught, so that means we need, well, so that's a different issue with the phones then?
Oh, yeah. I'm just making a comparison that, you know, it, it is taught. We have really excellent teachers who do their job and, and put forth the material. However, um, sometimes it goes through one ear and not the other with students.
We also have Senate Bill 636 that requires, um, testing of civics as well as United States history. That's to be taken at the, uh, the end of the course, so, um, because we are full, um, year courses, those are taken, um, at the end of the senior, or the end of the year that they take that course, and, um, those results are also reported to us.
Well, I, I just wondered, is there, is there a better ti- is there just a better grade? I mean, I know it's back in the dark ages, I took civics in my sophomore year. That was when everybody, uh, in my school system, a couple counties away, that's when we had to do it.
Several years ago, when this was made a graduation requirement, it made sense to put civics in the senior year because that's about the time they get registered to vote and become more active citizens. That was the reasoning. And then because West Virginia has, uh, was one of the leaders in personal bankruptcies, they added the personal finance component. I don't know, Sandy, you probably have a better memory than I do, probably about 12 years ago?
Yes. I knew it was in there, but, but we hear the same thing. I mean, I think all of us here, oh, gosh, they don't know how to do a loan, they don't understand credit card interest and blah, 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 so.
Right.
Anyway, just, this was an opportunity to bring all that up and ask those questions.
Sure, and, and your concern has been noted. Thank you.
All in favor of policy 2625, civics, civics education test, first reading, going out for first reading, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same? Assistant Superintendent?
Uh, we're to policy 2411, which is the guidance and counseling. Um, policy out for first reading, and the superintendent recommends, um, approval of this, and I believe that Jennifer has some additional information on this.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Jennifer?
So this one, we're going a little out of order from what we typically do. Typically, we do one meeting, an introduction, and then a first reading. This is the first time you're seeing it in first reading because of, uh, timeline by the state. So our county has to present this to the State Department in October as our new policy. This is a result of the major revisions to West Virginia Board of Education Policy 2315, which was essentially re- rewriting this entire counseling policy. So, um, as you can see, the entire thing was, is redlined and totally rewritten. So it sets forth the comprehensive school counseling programs, um, make sure that it's standards-based, that students have access, and that there is a professional development component built in. So, um, that's why we're bringing this to you as first reading rather than discussion point first.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Any questions?
So what happens if you need more than 20% of time to do administrative activities? With that, I'm thinking pulling transcripts, things that are time-intensive. I mean, it's just...
So I'm not on the practitioner side, and Courtney has left.
Courtney has left the building.
She has reviewed the policy, um, and gave it her stamp of approval for the language.
So she feels this is a realistic distribution of percentage of time?
She does, yes.
Okay, all in favor of policy 2411, guidance and counseling going out for first reading, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same? Assistant Superintendent?
For discussion, we have policy 3120.08, employment of personnel for extracurricular activities. These are new policies, um, and Jennifer can update the, um, our board on policy employment for personnel for extracurricular activities.
So, um, again, this, this one is just for introduction this evening. So this first policy applies to service personnel, and basically what this says, um, this is just, it's a result of passage of House Bill 3266, which said that upon the retirement of employees, service employees, all of their extracurricular contracts will also be terminated at that time. They can, of course, rebid on those as a retiree, but they, they don't hold those continuously. And not to jump ahead, um, but then policy 4120.08 is the same thing but for professional employees.
So they, no, those groups, I mean, with the service, it's all seniority, totally seniority-based.
Not for coaching.
No, no, I'm not talking about coaching. I'm talking about the paint crew, the summer work crew, the...
Oh, yeah, those extra crews.
Those, all of those extracurriculars.
Yes.
Contracts. So how, how would they assign those?
So, um, we actually have this situation that comes up every year because we have people who retire June 30th, and then the paint crew typically has already started, but if it's an extracurricular that, or summer program that starts after that, those are wiped out, they can rebid, but that, they no longer hold that seniority for that job.
Do the years count, though, towards their applying for that?
There's, there's summer, so summer's different. So you're asking summer's paint crew, that's summer seniority. Extracurricular seniority is different than summer seniority. I mean, they're all wiped out. But when you look at specific to extracurricular, so if you have a retired bus driver, and, um, I just posted a bunch of extracurricular jobs today for retired bus drivers, but if they want to bid on that job, they can bid, but it's, they don't automatically get it back. So it goes first to regular employees. We then look at it that way, so.
So they're going to have the preference. So let's go, now go to the coaching side.
Okay.
So if someone retires, they're no longer the coach. They apply for a job, uh, coach, the, a coaching job, and someone who was a, uh, community member who did not have school seniority applies for the coaching job, but they've had other coaching jobs, the community person. How does that work?
I looked to Bob.
We've actually had that in the past, and, and because I personally like the idea of when a person retired, they lost the extracurricular. But what was also explained to me is if they reapply, um, who's going to be more experienced at that job? So it's not going to... So it's not going to necessarily be automatically handed to them, but if they've had satisfactory evaluations, and they've held that position, and they're applying for the same position they've held, you're going to have to have some good reasons not to give it to them.
So is it grievable?
Well, over qual, you have to have, you have to be able to explain why you selected who you did, and it has to be objective criteria.
The reason I'm asking, I'm thinking, okay, let's say we have head coach A, who was an employee who has since retired, and they no longer have that. We have community member B, who may have had 10 years' experience in that, and wants to move up to the A position. So, in my mind...
The administration's going to have to interview and decide who has, who's the most qualified for that position.
Okay.
And if I've held it before, you know, to me, that's probably a step up on everybody, but that doesn't necessarily mean that I've done a great job.
There we go. I mean, and there may be some people who will look at this as an opportunity for, you know, a teacher in the system, or a community member that's worked with that program for a long time to move up into that head job.
And that's why it's important for administrators to be doing, or at the high school level, the ADs, to be doing objective evaluations at every year, so you have some documentation you can base your decision upon.
And a matrix.
Right.
Because now your faculty senate's not going to be involved in those type of employments.
No.
So, I guess I just want all that to be out there, and I want to be clear on that before... Okay, thank you.
All right. All in favor of policy 3120.08, employment of personnel for extracurricular activities, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same.
That's service.
Oh.
It's discussion.
And wipe that out, don't vote on that.
The next three are discussion.
Going out for, thank you, Jennifer, moving on. See, I'm a mess, huh? I'm nervous staying, I got the boss beside me now, I'm nervous.
All right, now for discussion. We have policy 4120.08, and this is employment of personnel for extracurricular activities.
And this is basically the same policy, just for professionals, yes.
Okay, as a past board member said, when you retire, you don't retire from everything but lunch and recess, was the comment we used to get out of the board member that was here, so, go ahead and move on to G.
Okay, and our third policy up for discussion is policy 5140, which is the motor vehicle driver's license restrictions. Jennifer?
Yes, so this policy was revised based on the changes to West Virginia Board of Education Policy 4150, and this was a result of legislative action as well, with, where the restrictions have changed, and this just updates current law, or reflects current law with this update.
This allows us more of a leeway for who can drop what, I think.
Assistant Superintendent, moving on to personnel?
Next is personnel matters, and for the personnel list, the superintendent recommends the personnel list to be approved as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask, what is a sign support specialist? Is it sign language?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of the personnel list as presented, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Okay.
We're on to the personnel list addendum, and the superintendent recommends this approved as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions, pullouts? All in favor of the personnel list addendum as presented, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Next board meeting.
Okay.
Is...
Yes, there's this reminder that there's a special work session to be conducted on September 20th at 6:00 PM to discuss the Renaissance Academy.
Okay, put that in our calendars, and we will be here in one week for that, is that right? Is that a Tuesday, right?
That's Tuesday.
Yes. Then for our next board meeting, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Montague, of County of Montnegalia, will be held on Tuesday, September 27th, 2022, in the administrative office at 1751 Earl Core Road, Morgantown.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned. Very good job.
Well, thank you, thank you for your support.
Good job, Sandy.
You done sweating?
I'm good, I don't even, don't make us sweat at any...
We don't need that.
It's a long one.